I will call a common council meeting to order. Could we have roll call please?
Iverson.
Here.
Schotzinger, Reamer.
Here.
Gallops.
Here.
Denkert.
Here.
Kotsky.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
Split.
Here.
May I have a quorum?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Gracious and holy God, we give you thanks for this beautiful place and community in which we are blessed to live. We give you thanks for these folks who are gathered here tonight to be doing about the work of maintaining and managing this community. We ask that all voices are heard tonight, all ears are open to hear, and that all may be about the work of this community for its good. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
All right. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Can we make a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll second.
Motion by Doug, second by Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Now time for public comment. This is the, this is the opportunity for citizens to come before the council with comments and concerns on any current city issue, knowing no action may be taken tonight. I ask that you keep it civil and respectful and within three minutes. However, discussion of personnel or of individual members of the common council shall not be permitted. I expect you to be respectful, and in return, I expect the council to treat the citizens with the same respect. Before you begin, please state your full name and address for the record. First, we have Wesley Brown. Would you like to step forward?
Hi, I'm Wesley Brown. I live in Ripon. I might not be from a popular viewpoint of the community, but...
Could we have his address, please?
Yeah, please state your address.
112 Hall Street.
Thank you.
So I might not be coming from a popular viewpoint of the city or of the state, but I just see a promotion of like alcohol with the city with October 13th promoting, like giving alcohol away. There's bars, there's, there's places all over the city. I walk my dog at night. I see drunk people in the street. People come up to me, can I pet your dog, all drunk. I don't, I'm not proud of a community like that. And I just think that the city could do something to promote a healthier environment instead of alcohol. I know there's a, there's a fentanyl outbreak, but nobody seems to care about alcohol problem. And I'm just here to express a, probably a minority viewpoint, but the city used to do like produce things and, and things that are beneficial to the community, but now it seems like I talk to like colors of the community and they, all they care about is like money coming in and alcohol brings revenue to the city. But me, I have to deal with the problems of it every day at work that I, that I deal with, so. And, and because of my viewpoints, I'm, I'm like, people in power seem to be able to, to harass me. So, like I said, I'm a minority person, but I just wanted to have a venue to express my viewpoints. And I'm, I'm tired of getting harassed. I just think the city could do a better job of influencing the population by, by promoting healthy events instead of alcohol and things. So there's already a problem out there. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next is Andrew Dorset?
Dorsh.
Dorsh?
All right. My name's Andrew Dorsh. I live at 819 Liberty Street. I'm here to discuss some current, current concerns that I have with the event barn on tonight's agenda. Specifically around the business plan for the event barn. So I used to work at Fond du Lac Economic County Development Corporation. And we used to help small businesses put together business plans so that they would come to meetings like this and talk about what the benefit to the community such as things like event barns would be. So the questions or the concerns that I have that I'd like to raise with the council this evening are, are that I would like to get some help with is, when will the event barn be opened? So when are they going to start operation? And then when will it be profitable? So what's the time period from when it opens to when it be, when it will be profitable? Will the event barn plan to borrow money during that time period prior to its being profitable? Is that loan going to be privately funded or is it going to be publicly funded, such as through a TIF or a TID? The other questions I have are, how is the event barn going to integrate into the small business community here in Ripon? So will the event barn join the Chamber of Commerce, help cross promote other businesses here in Ripon and Watson Street such as caterers, rental outfits and other planning agencies such, for wedding services such as planners and clergy? And then lastly, how will the event barn capture a consistent share of the event space market here in the community? So what's going to be the big differentiator that draws people to the Ripon Event Barn as opposed to them going six miles up the road to Berlin or over to the event barn in Oshkosh? There's also quite a bit of event space here within Green Lake and the surrounding communities. So essentially what we want to do is understand how is this barn going to draw people in so that it's economically viable? So that it's a sustained business here within Ripon. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristen Dorsh.
Thank you. I am Kristen Dorsh. I also live at 819 Liberty Street. We share the east property line with the proposed event barn. We've been there about 11 years. You're going to hear a lot of different things tonight because there are several in our neighborhood that have attended and I just, we all have a lot of the same opinions on this, but we wanted to make sure that you under, or at least heard each of our thoughts on this. You know, one of the biggest things that we have talked about in this is the safety concerns. Currently, we are a really nice little community. We know who's in our neighborhood. I know who I live by. I know that if there was an emergency, the people sitting right next to me always have my back and that, that means a lot to me. The one thing that I did want to address is there was a lot of comparisons for this when this first came out. As, you know, people were comparing it to Union Hall or the Village Green on Watson. Union Hall, we did speak with the chief, requested police reports. We did see a lot of the crime that was going on there. So that was a big concern for us. As for Watson Street, Andy and I actually have very personal experience living directly across from the Village Green. We used to live at 429 Watson, which is directly across. And in that time, we had several drunk people try and enter our apartment when we lived there. We would have people vomiting in our yard, cutting through our yard, peeing in our yard during and after Village Green events, and that ended at 10:30. So that's a concern that we're going to be experiencing this all over again if this happens. The other thing is, is we reside full-time at our residence. Nobody's going to be living there. So that, that's a little bit of a concern for us as well. The other concern we have is if this does happen and we would choose to not live there anymore, we are concerned about the resale value of our home if we wanted to move, as many of our neighbors are concerned about. I'm not sure how many buyers would be interested in living next to something that may cause a lot of noise in a currently quiet neighborhood. So those are my biggest concerns right now. As I said, I know that others are going to be addressing some things as well, but that is what I wanted to address. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Dawn Finley.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me address the council. My name is Dawn Finley. I live at 815 Liberty Street. So one door down from the proposed event barn. I'm just going to start out with just a few things listing out CPA, dentist, chiropractor, insurance agent, lawyer, real estate agent, hairstylist. What do all of these have in common? When you think about using any of these services or going to any of these offices, what, what was your experience like? What was the atmosphere like? What was the time of day? How long did it last? How many people were on the premises at the time that you were using these professional or personal services? These are the things that I see they have in common. Their operating hours are Monday through Friday, eight to five, perhaps some Saturday morning hours if you're a hairstylist like me. Usually you have clients of one or two people that go in and out at a time. If you're a lawyer, right, you can only talk to so many people at once. There's probably a maximum of people total on the premises. If you have administrator, the people you're seeing, you know, a couple of different stylists, some people waiting, maybe a dozen. And according to Ripon City Coordinates, Chapter 20, Section 34, these are examples of uses allowed with conditional use permit. Besides these specific examples, it states other similar uses. The B3, word for word from the ordinance, the B3 Neighborhood Business District is intended to provide for professional and personal service uses in locations within or adjacent to residential areas. According to Merriam-Webster, intend is a transitive verb to have in mind as a purpose or goal, to design for a specific, specified use in the future. So according to the ordinance, this is, would an event barn be what people had in mind? Does it fit within the definition of a professional or personal use in a residential neighborhood? Is it like going to see your CPA or a doctor or lawyer's office? This is not something that would have been intended when this ordinance was developed. I'm, I'm sure of it. The uses of what was intended by the B3 overlay would and should have minimal impact on the surrounding neighborhood. An event venue as proposed is not similar by any means. The hours of operation are going to be eight to midnight on a Friday and Saturday night, in contrast to eight to five on Monday through Friday. It'll be loud until 10:30. There will be 100-plus people at any given time. These 100-plus people have access to alcohol. If you're a dentist or a chiropractor in the room and you offer alcohol, then I'm obviously going to the wrong professional services. So kudos to you. Parking lot is for 60 plus.
This is your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Kendra Kobach.
Hello, my name is Kendra Kobach. I live at 831 Church Street, which my backyard is directly across the road from the approach to the front of the proposed event barn and the house that is there on the property. I am going to be addressing the concerns of mainly our children in our neighborhood. I have a few points. The heavier traffic flow that this event barn would bring in would affect the children's unsupervised as well as supervised travel throughout our neighborhood. Right now, our, many of the surrounding, my neighbors, myself, our kids play in the neighborhood and they can go into our neighbors' yards without us being concerned. They can ride their bikes around the block. There are a lot of unsupervised children that are, their parents feel safe to send them around the block to the park. There's a lot of unsupervised children's travel there. The heavier traffic would or could potentially propose a threat to that, but even supervised, if there's going to be alcohol, I mean, we've all been to weddings. Sometimes people leave early, even after consuming numerous drinks. This could still propose a threat in the early evening, potentially. I'd also like to bring attention the, I'm sorry, safety of the neighborhood and children insured by the child protect, or predator laws surrounding the park is now going to be at risk due to those in attendance possibly at the barn. Is there going to be any kind of, you know, insurance to us that there's going to be any kind of monitoring? Is this going to be enforced to make sure that, you know, our children are going to be safe? Right now, they are not allowed within 1,500 feet, distance-wise of the park. The event barn is 1,056 feet exactly if you go from the front right to the park. Are they going to be honest about, you know, oh, well, it might be far enough away, that's going to be 100-plus people and they're going to just blend in the background and now we have to worry about them being within walking distance of our children, whether it be next door or just to go down to the park? Where again, a lot of these kids feel safe currently to be completely unsupervised and our, the parents feel safe with that as well. I'm also going to bring up a concern that I was given permission to draw to your attention by Michael and Cheryl Block/Kraus. They live at 122 West Street. Their child is 31 with the mental age of four to 10. He has Down Syndrome as well as other mental, we're not disclosed. And he's a high flight risk. Yes, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Kevin Polston.
All right. Hello, my name's Kevin Polston. My wife, four-year-old daughter, and I have resided at 121 West Street for the last eight years. We respectfully request that you vote no to the rezoning application for the following reasons. The approval of the B3 overlay rezone will be detrimental to the safety of the residents and properties in our community. The safety concern is due to the increase in traffic that an event barn will bring. During the Plan Commission meeting, the conditions included a maximum of 100 people per event, operating seven days a week. This has the potential to bring in 700 guests plus event staff that's not limited to catering, bartending, and entertainment every week. Guests will especially, out-of-town guests will be unfamiliar with the roads in the area, especially the roads of Liberty, State, West, Dartford, and Combe. I mention these streets specifically because the parking lot is planned to enter and exit on State Street, giving increased traffic flow to the States, to the streets that are poorly lit, have blind turns, deep ditches, no sidewalks, wild animal crossing, and predominantly minimal traffic. The proposed plan for the event barn to host weddings and hold a liquor license will increase the people in the area being under the influence of alcohol and potential other recreational drugs during the hours of operation and beyond with close access to rural country roads. Additionally, guests and staff at the event barn may not be familiar with the amount of children that reside and play, even in the streets due to lack of sidewalks in our established residential area. Another safety concern that the event barn with a liquor license is for our properties, properties of our houses and land around. Over the course of our time, as well as the previous owners, Jean and Evelyn Kane, our mailbox has been hit by vehicles on numerous occasions. Our neighbor had a car drive off the road and destroyed part of his house. Other neighbors have expressed that cars have driven into their ditch repeatedly. Shortly after we moved in, another incident occurred where a vehicle went over the guardrail of the Crystal Creek Bridge. I'd also like to note that that wasn't fixed until this fall of 2023. We moved in in 2016. Additionally, so the hazardous conditions can be exponential. Additionally, there are concerns for damage to the city-owned Heritage Park and Woodland Cemetery. If accidents occur with standard traffic, one can reasonably predict that there will be an increase of similar incidences if the B3 overlay zone is approved. For this reason, as is your constituents, we respect, we request that you vote no to the B3 overlay rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Amanda Prisbill.
Hi, I'm Amanda Prisbill. I reside at 800 Church Street. I am one block from the proposed event barn. And when I walked out of my house tonight, I stopped in the driveway for a second and I just stood there. And do you want to know what I heard? The wind. I heard a toddler saying mama, and that was it. That is why we moved in our house. That is why we bought our house three years ago was because that neighborhood is older and established and the yards are larger. There's more room and it feels like the country in the city. We're on the outskirts of the city. And we believe the noise from an event like this will affect the tranquility and the reason we purchased the place. If we wanted that sort of activity, we would have purchased in a different part of town. So we were very intentional when we did that. We are asking you to vote no to this tonight, but if you feel you must, say yes. We ask that you put a condition that is reviewed one year after the first summer with the availability for public comment again to evaluate the effect that this business will have on the community. You're hearing a lot tonight and from a lot of neighbors, and I think what that shows is that we, as a community, a neighborhood community, are all very passionate and share the same viewpoints. And we hope that the city will understand that it's not easy for us to come here and talk about this and ask for something. You know, we are Midwesterners. We, we don't ask for things. I think it means even more in how passionate we are about it that so many came and prepared remarks. And we hope you understand that we are part of this city too. And we really just want to keep our neighborhood the safe, tranquil environment that it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and last we have Donna Charlie Johnson.
My name is Donna Charlie Johnson and I live at 840 Liberty Street, which is directly north of the area you'd like to rezone B3 business. I live directly across from the field and I would encourage you to consider voting no against this rezoning. Because one of the reasons is it's the oldest residential neighborhood in the city. It has the most history. And, and it has a challenge with regards to environmental impacts of being zoned B3 because the western portion of this property, 835 Liberty Street, is bounded by public waters in the manner of Crystal Creek. Crystal Creek is bounded on each side on that property by wetland. A resident received notification of the proposed event barn on May 22nd. That wetland was destroyed by the landowner on May 23rd and May 24th. He did not get the required DNR permit. He did not get the required wetland delineation and he did not submit a required proposal for mitigation after grading and filling in the land in that area. These are requirements as expressed to me by DNR Agent Francesca Sanchez, in whose district this facility lies. I think the owner of this land has a vision that he wants to fulfill. And I think what we're all asking him to do is not just overlay his vision over us and disregard the environment, our children, our safety, and the safety of the entire community with his vision. I think that his moving forward on the destruction of the wetland, which has increased flooding, there have been three rain events since this was done. And in each of these events, the flooding was more significant in my yard, which is north of that property and downstream, and in the property further downstream, I can't say their last name. And we haven't had a significant rain event. These were just normal rain events. There are times prior to the destruction of this wetland when we would get four inches in a rainstorm and my, the creek in my yard would go from three feet to 70, 70 feet. And I can provide video of that. I have worked with the city because I plan to address this and my, my representative.
All right. Thank you to everyone who had comments this evening. All right, so we will move directly into our agenda items. First of which is the rezone application for the Ripon Event Barn LLC at 835 Liberty Street, a B3 Neighborhood Business overlay onto a R1 residential district.
Excuse me, Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you. So as you can see in your packets, that this has gone to Plan Commission. It actually took two meetings to finalize it. In the first meeting, there was a public hearing where many of these same people spoke, sharing the concerns there. And at that meeting, Plan Commission did ask the property owner to come back with more details on the plan, which he did at the second meeting in July. And at the second meeting, the Plan Commission did approve the conditional use permit and recommend that the council approve the zoning. You do see in your packet that there are... You do see in your packet that there are several conditions that were put on there, one of which is the council approves the zoning. They acquire and maintain a permanent alcoholic beverage license, limited hours of operation, minimum parking requirements, and several landscaping requirements. Those conditions were put in place to help mitigate the concerns of the neighborhood residents that did come to speak in the public hearing. We have Wayne Chaney here, if you'd like to make any presentation to the council.
Yes, I'd like to respond to some of the concerns that the neighbors have and any questions that the council may have also. I'd like to start off by saying that we didn't destroy anything when it came to the stream. There were over 40 ash-bore dead trees that we took out, which was rather expensive. And since then, I've planted over, up close to 50 shade trees, 75 feet to the east of the river along that area, so that it will always be permanently kind of a parkland. And we did have somebody from Fond du Lac County, a wetlands expert of some kind, who came and reviewed what we were doing and said we were doing fine and go right ahead. So we thought we had the blessing of the Fond du Lac County, whoever that was. The concern about liquor is a valid one, but I think we have to look at what the event barn focuses on, the event center. It is primarily focused on family events, which should be graduations, anniversaries, weddings. It's going to have not-for-profit organizations that are going to be using it and hopefully some for-profit organizations. But these are businesses. These aren't wild parties of any kind. It's a totally different atmosphere than a bar downtown or even a restaurant downtown, where they have the public with no control over who's there. The events, when you have family events, normally things are pretty controlled by Another item about events that are planned, events require a contract that basically has the organization or family lease the property for the two or three days that are needed. Normally, there's a setup day for everything, the tables, chairs, and whatever else they need, the catering. And that would normally be done on Thursday or Friday. Saturday is probably the event, and Sunday and Monday are cleanup. So you only have one event per week generally, generally. And if we take 10 to 15 hours per event, we do not have heating in the building beyond the ability to take the property up about 10 degrees so that in the spring and fall, we would be able to take, if it's a little chilly out, we'd be able to have an event and bring the temperature up to maybe 70. But we can't be there in the winter. We wouldn't even try to book anything. We've tried to maintain the character of the buildings with wood floors, wood walls, wood ceilings that are there right now. And we're not putting in drywall or insulation. We're putting in a lot of beautiful lighting and electric. But the property, the building will probably, over the year, have less than 300 hours of use, which is about 3% of the total time that the building's going to be sitting there during the year. So it's not like it's there all the time like a restaurant or a bar or something like that. Let's see. We would join the chamber. My goal would be for us to be the best neighbor that they have. I think that's all that I have, other than we do, I'm a master gardener, and I've always overdone landscaping, and we're planning to make this a very beautiful botanical area of five and a quarter acres as a part of the whole process. That'll be a part of what attracts the people to come to the place. That's about all that I have, unless you have some questions.
Just one question to that point with regards to the conservation of the natural environment.
Yes.
You're not planning on making, not building any new buildings besides a small change to an entry?
We're taking the existing buildings and just renovating them and no new buildings.
No new buildings.
There might be, the house itself is a four-bedroom, two-story saltbox, and it has no garage. We might put in a two-to-three car garage eventually. That'd be the only thing I can think of.
By the house, though.
By the house.
Okay. Yeah. But the grassy areas are remaining guarded or grassed?
There is no other construction planned. There's a slight addition to the big barn that comes out about 10 feet that becomes the entrance, like an entrance covered, a covered entrance.
Any council members have questions? Dave?
A lot of people here tonight are talking like you're going to have an event with 100, 150 people there. Are you really going to have that many people in that space?
We've drawn up the maximum number of people that we can get there, and that's even a little uncomfortable, and that's about 100 people. It's likely that we would keep the number down to 80 or 90, and that would be limited in the contract with whoever's leasing the space. It just doesn't work to get more people in than that.
Okay. So you're looking at like a max of 75, 80 people?
Well, I would say 80 to 90.
Okay. And then as far as parking, they're all going to be able to park on your property?
Yes. Along State Street, we have an area that's about 120 by about 200, and that will accommodate parking for 60 cars. And we're actually keeping the grass look, and we're putting in, there's a structure or kind of wire-type things you can put in, and you still end up with grass look. But if cars run over it in wet conditions, it doesn't affect it. It'll look the same. It'll be a lawn a week later.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions for Wayne?
All right, I'm going to go with one more.
Okay. Wayne?
Yes.
Yeah, one more.
Another concern, one of the bigger ones was noise.
Yes. And the ordinance, we intend to comply with the noise ordinance. There is one. And also, we intend to comply with the ordinance that says that you cannot have amplified music after 10:30, and that's throughout the city, and we would certainly comply with that.
Are you willing to adjust if you get some events during the week? I mean, are you in there playing loud music at 10 o'clock when kids?
We have a limit, I think, of, I forgot what time.
Yeah, the weekday limit, or Sunday through Thursday, the ending time has to be 9:00 PM.
9:00? Okay. All right. Thanks.
I'll open it up to discussion. Ellen?
Last week, Thursday, I had a listening session with the residents of the neighborhood at Suresco Park, and many of them are here this evening and spoke against this overlay. There were a few, two couples there who I wouldn't say were enthusiastically in favor, but were amenable to this. In listening to the concerns of the constituents of my district, I will be voting no on this application.
I will say that as the chair of the plan commission, we did listen to all the concerns from the neighbors, and the plan commission felt that the conditions that we put on the property owner should help, if not completely alleviate, all of those concerns. So the plan commission, at least myself on the plan commission, feel that we have done everything we can to alleviate any concerns. I know that people in the audience don't feel that we've listened to you, however we did. And I believe, it is my belief, that in a matter of a year of operation, you'll realize that the concerns are more than, or there's no reason for the concern. One of the key requirements was the acquisition and maintenance of a permanent alcoholic beverage license. If there are major safety issues or several police interventions at the property, the city does have the ability to restrict or remove a liquor license for cause, and that would instantly break the conditional use. Though there are backstops that we did put in place.
Mark?
As another member on the plan commission, I will say I did personally listen to all of the comments, and I did try for the conditional use permit to try and address each one individually. But there was one specific portion that's kind of coming to us as the council tonight, which is the B3 business overlay and the wording that it is in the ordinance. And the examples that are given within the B3 overlay, I think, are more of a professional and quiet, so I think there's a strong, you know, reasoning there for a no vote. But I also was on the plan commission, and I did vote to approve the conditional use permit to try and address those concerns. Those are just kind of my comments to my fellow council people and to you, Mayor, that I think the conditional use permit has had as much work and has had as much input that we can try and work and work with both parties at stake here. But there's also now this other thought that's going through my head that I'm weighing about the B3 overlay, if that really fits what this business would be. So those are just my opinions right now, and I wanted to share those with.
Just for what it's worth, if you look at the ordinance, it talks about similar uses, and one can argue those are not necessarily similar. There's also the, any conditional use allowed in the underlying district. And that essentially talks about uses for businesses that are inside of the main building or accessory buildings. So it does fit under that category for certain. So that one does cover you if you're concerned that it's not a business use.
Yes, and I understand that the conditional use permit is a use that's been permitted, and those are listed as examples, not as de facto.
Right, and I'm going one step further. It says, "Any conditional use allowed in the underlying district." And if you read R1 district, you will see reference to, and let me find the specific language.
While he is looking for the language, I will.
Residential business activities are permitted as conditional uses provided such uses are situated within the main or accessory buildings. And that is what this business is suggesting. So it is specifically provided under R1 zoning. Residential business activities, which is what this is, are permitted as conditional uses provided such uses are situated within the main or accessory buildings. And other uses in the R1 district that are permitted, churches, schools, colleges. You can certainly look at more things going on with those in an R1 district than what's been described and limited in this specific incident. So that's just for what it's worth, the reading of the statute.
Thank you. Ellen?
I would ask, as I, I will not be making this motion, nor will I second it, but I would ask that whoever asks to make the motion add the request of the audience members to do a review in a year.
Is that permissible for a rezon?
It is not permissible within the rezon, but certainly could be added to the conditional use.
Will that have to go back to plan commission?
It would have to go back to plan commission. It would have to go back, but certainly could be part of a motion that.
So a motion approval?
Would be to go back to plan commission to add an additional condition for a review in one year and give a favorable recommendation if that condition was added.
Okay.
Can't we just make a motion to make this good for one year tonight?
Again, that's the mechanism. You control the zoning, not the conditional use. But the two are tied because it's an overlay, which requires a conditional use. So the legal process of it would require a motion to send it back to plan commission to add that restriction and simultaneously approve if that condition is added.
Steve?
Does the city have any liquor licenses left to give out?
Yes, they have two.
Two?
Okay. One second. Wayne?
I'm concerned about the one-year thing. I have to confess that this project is going to take a lot of funds, and they're coming out of my pocket. And I'm not going to go into a project that can be taken away a year later. If that's a part of it, I just won't do the project.
And I will say to that, we do have an annual review of, essentially an annual review, if there are significant issues with the liquor license. It cannot be pulled without cause, but if.
The liquor license is okay. I don't have to question that, but.
Right, but if there are problems with the property, there are citations, the city does have the authority to revoke a liquor license. But it would require cause, and if there is no issues with the property.
But do you normally put a deadline of like one year on it?
It's an annual license.
An annual, it's just an annual thing.
It's an annual event.
And it's the same requirements for every bar in town.
Sure. Okay.
And convenience store.
And convenience store. Doug?
I guess I would argue that a wedding, which I think is the predominant use for this event barn, the officiant is providing a personal service. The wedding coordinator or event coordinator is providing a personal service. So to me, this is all personal service and you having witnesses to this event. So I don't see a problem. I would also like to add that when I moved to Fenton Street almost 20 years ago, there were no apartment buildings on that street, none. It was a much quieter street. Now there are three large complexes on Fenton Street. I could look out my door and see them. A little more traffic. No one's died yet. And there are no sidewalks. And growth happens, change occurs, and that's the way it is. I'm sorry.
And I will remind the council that when considering rezoning, you are to decide on highest and best use for the property. And in my opinion, the only other use for this property would be to develop it for housing. And the most efficient way to do that is multifamily housing, which I personally think would degrade the neighborhood more than this project. So in my opinion, this would be the highest and best use, but that is ultimately for you to decide.
So obviously, like our city needs to change, and zoning doesn't need to be static, I get that. But I feel like our job here is to listen to the constituents and make our best choice based on what we're hearing from the constituents and what we can see as the best use of it. And I would agree that rezoning this is fundamentally changing the property and the community that they moved into. And I think as community members, there should be some form of, you know, ad hoc system.
And I think as community members, there should be some form of, you know, ad hoc social contract that they are able to be in as a community with an expectation that their property maintains that in perpetuity.
Mark, and then Steve.
I, I understand what you're getting at, but I would have to offer a counter example of the new stadium that the college just built. The college owned that property, saw they had a need for a new stadium, and with it being their property and with proper approvals, that has fundamentally changed that entire neighborhood. And that, I think, that's a, you know, games are on Saturday, that's going to be a lot of noise and significantly more traffic than an event barn. And I don't think we've seen any issues with that. I'm free to be corrected if anyone knows of many issues we've had with.
And I will point out that that stadium is two blocks from this property.
Yes. It's very close. So I, I think there's a concern there, and there's definitely valid concerns about increased traffic, but I think Union Street, which the, the park sits immediately on, is already seeing much more increased traffic with changes that are already happening within the city. So while that concern is valid, it may be hard to say one use was appropriate and this use is not appropriate, just because it happens to be either on the road immediately or one block off of it.
Doug?
It's his land, he's got to be able to do something with it. And it's either a event barn, maybe once a week, or it gets redeveloped in multifamily housing, and then that would really change the character, namely, as the mayor has just said. I think it's his land, the city, it's just approving this, we don't have, we're not funding any money into this project, there's no TID district, there's no, none of that. But it's his land, he needs to be able to do what he wants with it. I think this is a reasonable use for it.
Steve?
The only concern, and I know that the Plan Commission must have looked at this, is what'd they consider on the floodplain on that? Because it is in a floodplain area, it sounds like.
There is floodplain on the property. The plantings that he has done are within the floodplain. So while the immediate effect may be that it has affected the floodplain short-term, long-term, he has probably improved it already. And it's only the first 50-ish feet from the stream that is in the floodplain.
On that note, I'd just call attention to there is a, an over, a drawing.
I saw that drawing.
And that area, you know, it's not really close to where the building and construction would be, or the proposed parking lot is pretty far away from that. So that was something that I had asked as well.
Can you show your map, Steve?
Uh, that I think is mine. No, that's yours.
You can see the floodplain district on the property, and the only planned activities submitted so far in that area would be landscaping.
I just want to, just counter your point, not to have a back and forth here, but I agree with you. Like, I don't want to be on the other side of arguing that it's somebody's property rights here, oddly enough. But it's, the property rights are residential, right? I mean, that's what it is today. I mean, it was purchased as a residential, it was, everyone around was purchased as a residential, so, you know, I look at property rights as a residential as it seems today, so.
Lud, if there is no motion, what happens to the situation?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the rezone for Ripon Event Barn LLC in 835 Liberty Street, B3 Neighborhood Business District Overlay on a R1 residential district.
Is there a second? That motion fails due to lack of second. Lud, what is the scenario at this point?
Without a motion on the floor to move it forward, it doesn't move forward. It can be sent back to the Plan Commission for further consideration or discussion of limiting the one-year thing. That's an option of the council. The vote that they didn't take was to rezonate currently.
Is there any other motions on this topic or discussion on this topic?
I'll make a motion to send it back to the Plan Commission for reconsideration at the next meeting.
What would they be reconsidering?
Reconsider the Sunday through Thursday hours of operations to amend to 8:00 AM to
Is that it for the motion?
Oh, that was it for the motion, yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
No, I'm not going to second that motion.
One last time, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
With consideration that they have the option to review this really seriously with, at the end of the year, for the neighbors.
To a friendly amendment to include that consideration? You're just adding to your motion to send it back to the.
Yeah, yeah, I'll take that friendly amendment.
And we have a motion on the floor.
So the motion is to send back to the Plan Commission with the alteration of the Sunday through Thursday hours to 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM with a one-year review of the conditional use permit. Is that correct for both of you? Okay, discussion on that motion?
I, I think this motion should fail. I think we should have voted on the rezone only tonight. Vote it, second it, either vote it up or vote it down, and move on. None of this sitting back. I think that's a waste of time going back to the Plan Commission and leaving this, leaving the landlord in limbo. So I think that's, that's a bad motion, I will not support it, going back to the Plan Commission.
Any further discussion on this motion?
But the two are tied together, so I don't know that, indicating, obviously, it's a unique set of facts, it's an overlay with a conditional use. So the idea that a council representative may have a concern, or two, concerning how it came before this body, knowing that if you just voted up or down on the zoning, the conditional use conditions come with it.
Yep, I fully understand that.
I just wanted to make it clear to the common council, I appreciate your position, I just think it's not an unreasonable motion, I guess is what I'm pointing.
Any more discussion on this motion? So the motion is to send this back to the Plan Commission with a suggestion to adjust the Sunday through Thursday hours from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM and add a one-year review of the conditional use permit. All who's in favor of this motion?
Take a roll call.
Roll call?
Iverson?
No.
Reamer?
Yes.
Gallops?
No.
Denkert?
Yes.
Gottske?
No.
Sorensen?
No.
Split, abstaining, or, motion fails.
Are there any further motions?
I, I appreciate the gentleman bringing this to us, but the neighbors just don't want it, I can't see change in it. I'd make a motion to deny the request.
Is there a second to that motion?
No.
Motion by Dave, second by Jonathan. Discussion on the motion to deny the rezone. One last, oh, Steve?
We're talking about possibly, if he decided to tear the barns down and then put, and they're historical barns, because they've been there for a long, long time. Tear the barns down and put apartments there, or seeing an excavator wanting to put his stuff in that area, they'd still have to zone that B3, right?
They could do R1 zoning. Provided by right, whatever in the R1 zone.
Yeah, can an excavator come in there with all his equipment?
They would never have to come here for anything.
Okay, in an R1, they can do that.
Yep, there's some things they can do. You'd have to look specifically at the ordinance.
I'll just say, I'm, I've been extremely torn all the way through this because I think the neighbors do have a lot of valid concerns, and it's hard to see things change in your neighborhood, but it, it's been difficult for me to be against something that I also think is possibly, or has the possibility of being a beautiful space for the neighborhood. So as a, as a member of the City of Ripon Council, it's, it's hard for me to say, you know, we don't want to try something or have a business work, but then also as a representative on the council, not only for my district, but, but for the city, it's, it's just been really hard for me to, you know, kind of navigate something that's workable for, for everyone, for their neighborhood and, and for the property owner. And I just wanted to specifically call that out, that I think everyone here is possibly feeling the same way I am, where it, it's hard to pick one way or the other. But without a final resolution or without a, a clear path forward, maybe letting it die, you know, letting the idea go and die on the vine is the way that we have to go without the, the support of the community as well, so.
My last words on this topic will be, Wayne, please.
There's one item of discussion that I shouldn't have left out, it should have been covered anyway. And that is the fact that when I originally looked at the property, the reason that I got involved in this is because I studied the background of it and the fact that the Schultz Honey Farm operated there, started in 1901. That business operated at that location until mid-1990s. So it's been vacant property for about 30 years. It just seemed like that was something in the city that should be, it's a part of their history that should, should be retained. That business was the, the largest producer of honey for a couple of years in the, in the 50s and 60s, 60s rather. And there, there's a history there. I, I guess the city has to determine how much of their history they want to keep and how much they want to destroy. That building, if we don't, if I don't get approval, the buildings will probably just sit there for years until I get a developer that's going to put up multifamily housing. That's what'll happen, that's a reality. And I don't think that's necessarily good for the city either.
Thank you, Wayne. So like I said, my last comments on the topic will be that, again, we are to consider the highest and best use for the property. Again, my opinion is preserving the barns, preserving the landscaping is probably the highest and best use, in my opinion. Also, when people buy a house across the street from an empty lot, you can't have the expectation that that lot is going to remain that way forever. An owner can develop their own lot.
Wasn't empty?
Not completely empty. Anyhow, those are my last comments. The motion on the floor is to deny the R3, or the B3 zoning overlay in an R1. Is there any more discussion on that motion?
Even though I made the motion to do this, I, I hope you don't give up on it. I mean, I would like to see you get with the neighbors and come up with a good use. I, I appreciate what he tried to do with it. I, I think people are scared of, of too many cars, too many people partying till midnight and then leaving drunk in that area. And if there was a way to just take away people's and the neighborhood's concerns, I, I think it would go a long way. I love what you're, the whole thing's perfect to me, as far as what it is, but I understand everyone's viewpoint of, a lot of, they're seeing a lot of traffic and a lot of people that have been drinking free alcohol for four hours, leaving their neighborhood. So I, I understand the concerns. Hopefully, you guys can work it out. I'd love to see something like that there.
Anyone else?
So a yes vote is to deny, just so we're clear.
So there is no more discussion? The motion is to deny the B3 Neighborhood Business District Overlay for 835 Liberty Street. Roll call, please.
Iverson?
No.
Reamer?
Yes.
Gallops?
Yes.
Denkert?
No.
Gottske?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Motion carries, force it.
Moving on. Next item is a fire and ambulance department consolidation plan. Adam?
In your package, I have a staff report and memo and then three proposals, we can wait till people sort of exit. So over the last couple of years, there have been a few different studies and reviews of both our, our ambulance and our fire service. Ripon Guardian Ambulance had a strategic plan done by Dan Williams a couple of years ago, and it brought together some, some major concerns regarding staffing and the facilities. Since that time, call volume has gone up and has been a challenge for the department from a staffing perspective. They're still responding to calls, we're not at that point where calls are not going, are not, are not being responded to. But certainly, some of the, the discussions over the last six months with the EMS chief, Mitch, who's here, have been, how do we move this along? What do we do for the future? What does staffing model look like in the future for Ripon Guardian Ambulance? In addition to that, Ripon Area Fire District has done some strategic planning, and they made reference in their strategic plan regarding a, a kind of a consolidated, a consolidated approach where fire and EMS join. That is not a, a new topic, that is something that has been discussed multiple times since I've been here, but there has been no real work in getting, getting toward that, that possible consolidation. So in response to those plans, in response to some of the challenges facing both departments, and frankly, just the conversation, going back to March, with the EMS chief regarding, what is, what does it look like next year? Or how do we plan for staffing additions? How do we plan for scheduling, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? It ultimately always. It ultimately always kind of came back to, well, what is the idea of consolidation look like? How do we do that? Does that impact any decision that we have to make in the next six months, year, two years, or sooner? So I approached four consulting firms, including strategic planning and consulting, who did the EMS study, they refused or did not submit a proposal. PAA, which you may be familiar with, PAA, they have done a couple of staff and recruiting efforts for the city. And McMahon, who is actually working with the fire department and did their strategic plan, and then also Public Consulting Group. So those three proposals were in your packet for review. There are no general conclusions made, but really, this effort is focusing on what does a city-led fire and EMS joint consolidated department look like? How is it formed? How is it funded? And, you know, changes the way these departments function, meaning more together. Ultimately, staff, we've reviewed these proposals. We feel that it's appropriate to bring it forward to the council. This is a council-led and a city-led effort to understand, you know, what a consolidation looks like. And our recommendation, just reviewing the proposals, is to work with PAA. The main reason for that recommendation is their complete grasp of what kind of it looks like to step-by-step work through a consolidation effort. And just our general relationship that we've had with them over the past couple of years, they've done a nice job working with the city. McMahon also has a history working with the city, certainly happy to answer any questions about any of the proposals or take any feedback.
I'd like to thank the city for taking this on. It dovetails nicely with the strategic plan that we have begun implementing at the fire district, and I would make a motion to accept the proposal from PPA for...
PPA?
PP, what?
PAA.
PAA, sorry. PAA for their proposal for this study consolidation plan.
I'll second that motion.
Motion by Ellen, second by Doug. Any discussion? Steve?
Are they going to move the ambulance out of the city hall here and go over by the fire department now? And is there going to be sleeping quarters for those people?
That would be certainly something that PAA will be studying.
Because most large cities like Oshkosh and other cities that I've been with have had consolidated fire department and ambulance service.
While I understand the question, I think everybody kind of starts forecasting, oh, it's going to happen and how it's going to look. Obviously, there are a lot of moving pieces to this. This is going to take many months. We'll have those discussions, but generally, it's, you know, one would assume, you know, in some of the things we've looked at from a study perspective, the city's facilities are weak. Well, obviously, you look at the fire department, you know, maybe their facilities are nicer. And in other areas, the ambulance may be strong. And so finding that balancing act of where this all lines up is what we will work through in this.
I know it's all city money, but is it coming out of just the city or is it coming, the cost coming out apart from the fire department?
This is a city, 100% city-led plan and study.
We already...
And we have that?
Yep. Through the EMS fund as well as the general fund, we will absorb this cost.
And we already funded our own strategic plan, which indicated that this was something that needed to be looked at.
Okay. Another question. This study, will it help with us to determine how we can staff better? Is that part of it? Or is it just going to say you should consolidate, end of story?
So generally speaking, as we understand it, is there will be, just looking at PAA's proposal, we're going to look at outcomes. We're going to look at what the standard service we want to provide the public, right? And then model staffing and budgets to that, those outcomes, right? If it's response time or whatever it may be, right? So ultimately, yes, there will be staffing models provided in the ultimate plan with recommendations, budgets, so on and so forth.
Probably also equipment.
Okay. It's just a lot of money, obviously, we know that, but I just think maybe some of this staffing could be done internally. There's got to be a reason that we don't have enough EMS and enough fire responders.
Well, we have enough.
As long as they're, pardon?
We have enough fire people right now.
So I think ultimately, yes, it is a lot of money, but this is arguably the biggest public safety change our community will encounter and tackle over the next few decades, or couple decades. It is a significant process and very, very important that we go through the right steps to, at the end of the day, come up with the right path forward.
Right. I just kind of struggle how it's going to help. I mean, we have the two entities now. They work together. What's going to be our outcome after we spend that $30,000?
Ultimately, you can see kind of where this goes and what they're looking for, but I mean, I think just an example, what we can state today is, we're currently paying individuals to be stationed at the fire department. At the same time, we're paying for people to be stationed at the ambulance, right? We're already duplicating some service, right? Right, we are.
Well, I don't know. Maybe the firefighters aren't EMS certified and maybe they're not...
That this fundamentally changes how we hire, who we hire, staffing models, et cetera.
Yeah. Can I just add to that? You know, most of, most people in our industry are dual-certified. I mean, that's what we're seeing coming out of school. And to be frank, we don't get the candidates any longer who just want to do ambulance. We're getting the guys and gals who are, who go through the fire service training, who want to be a career firefighter or part-time volunteer. You know, I say volunteer again, it's really not volunteer paid, but it's just the demographic that we're getting from the tech schools is not the same. We don't, we used to be able to staff, you know, the ambulance with an abundance of people who were just looking to get their feet wet in the field. It's not the case anymore, and there's no indication that that's going to change. So that's the biggest reason.
I would also like to, we have a similar problem on day shift. We are, we're able to have people on day shift who are going to school, but they're getting that dual designation, and then they're being hired away by larger cities. We just lost, we just lost one. I don't know if he's, you lost him, but we lost one.
Yeah, we did too, and we'll lose another here shortly, who's a paramedic working for us. He did ride time here, but, you know, he can't pay the bills with what we pay him, unfortunately. I sure wish we could, but he's a good candidate too, that he's going to seek full-time fire and EMS employment. So those are the kind of, those are the majority of the people seeking jobs, that is what they're looking for, and that's what we need to offer to attract those people.
There is another issue too. His year up 20% in calls.
Yeah.
We're up 12 to 15% this year over last year. So the call volume, yeah, call volume is increasing. Because a lot of those are lift assists, and we're many times helping you all with lift assists.
I'll come back, Doug?
It is my opinion, as a member of the fire board, current fire board, in the past, that the current model is broken as a fire district. It's basically creaking along because of the will of the board and of the current leadership and the dedication of the firefighters in that joint fire department. But leadership in the past has been lacking at all levels. Fit tests were not done for mass. Physicals were not done. It's been a redundant issue going back a decade or more. The idea that just do an annual physicals, fit test, all this kind of stuff, fire inspections are a thing. Are they done? Maybe, maybe not. Are we going to hire them out? Because, you know, looking for a chief to do fire inspections, that is not going to happen. We have problems at deciding what this is going to look like. We need this guidance and help with the study. We need to know what kind of equipment we need to continue to purchase. We have an engine that's not usable right now because of an accident that was in the paper. We have, we have issues that we need to address. We have leadership at EMS and in the fire that I believe can match, I believe the building could be with some money redesigned so that it is working for everyone in that building. So we need to do the study, and I'm going to vote that we do it and move on. I don't know how long it's going to take to implement this, but we got to move on.
John? Okay. It seems like we know the problems, and I mean, I've heard this before. We have problems with the fire, with the EMS, and I'm not faulting anybody, but do we really need to spend $30,000 to have somebody else tell us what the problems are?
No, they're not telling us what the problems are. They're telling us the process to fix the problems, and it's a long, difficult process. There's a lot of things that we have to get absolutely right, and we need their professional services to make sure that we get those things right.
Okay, can I just address that? John?
Yeah.
We did a strategic plan. It was voluminous, and we're still implementing what we learned in there, standard operating procedures, standard operating guidelines for hose testing, for all this. We're creating a bible so that those firefighters, when they come to work for us, know how, what and how they're supposed to do something. So, yeah, that was all lax before, honestly. We are set to try to develop and build a regional fire department that other fire departments will want us to come and help them with, that will want to train with us. That stuff was all lacking in the last, I don't know, probably from the beginning of the district, just looking at the minutes of stuff that I've read. We need to improve it, and that study that we did showed us the way forward. This is going to show us the way forward to combine these two together. Don't just say, oh, why do we still have to spend this kind of money, this nearly $30,000? You think that's expensive. Not doing it will cost us even more down the road. So we're just, I think we just need to spend it and move on.
Just really my two cents. I actually asked the exact same question that you just did on the fire board when we went to it, because I was like, I've been through so many consultants in the past, I'm really jaded. I'm like, this is a lot of money. We just threw down the toilet and we got nothing out of it. You've been there at Alliance. And so I asked the exact same question, and I'm happy we did it. Can't say like, maybe this one would exactly be the same? I don't know, but the fire one was really beneficial, because we knew the problem, just like you're saying. But at the end of it, the output, it was clearly laid out with a little more specificity about the problem than we realized, with a clearly like itemized bullet of how to address the problem. It was helpful. Just my two cents.
And that's exactly, I mean, what we're going to get here is, we're going to take, you know, they'll reference those two, you know, assessments that we had done already. We know the problem. We know the fire problem, we know the EMS problem. They'll take those together, and what this really is, is going to be a plan that is above our expertise to implement a consolidation of a municipal fire and EMS department. Lot of, lot of moving parts there that we just don't have the expertise, nor does really any city. So having the consultants that are, you know, years of experience doing this, I think, is the way we need to go.
Just to confirm, we didn't get a motion correct?
Yeah, because I said it wrong. So you have a, you have a motion.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? One more time? Any more discussion?
I've said enough, Mayor.
I agree with John. I think that that's a lot of money to spend for consultation.
No, no, it's not a consultation. I'm sorry. It's not a consultation.
It's a development of a strategy.
We're developing a roadmap forward, not just, we'll talk about it, we'll think about it. Concrete steps, what, you should look at the strategic plan for the fire department, for the fire district. Concrete steps, the things we need to fix. So whether this combination happens or not, the fire district has to keep moving this forward. Our plan, our standard operating procedures, our guidelines, we need to fix this, fix the bylaws. We need to update things. We need to make sure that our firefighters know what's going on, so they know what to do. We need to make sure training's done. We need to make sure this is done. It can be overwhelming to make sure all that's done. So the board, I have to tell you, isn't really capable of doing that on a consistent basis. I think I'm correct about that. We're more overseeing the budget and approving some policy changes and such, but that day-to-day stuff, like, has, have they had their physicals done this year? That's not really a core issue until it is because they're not done. I want to make sure they're done. So I think a city-led department would be able to keep track of the budget better, because it's a mess down there still, and...
Hey, it's getting better.
It's getting better, it is. I can agree with you, Ellen. I've been watching it improve, but it's because the board has had to really micromanage things more than I think we ought to be able to do that. We ought to be able to have people watching that. And this plan is going to help us move forward so that the budget's managed better, so the people are managed better, they're used better, they're happier, we could protect the community better. And this is what I see that $30,000 is for. So as I said, if you think it's expensive now, wait till we don't do it.
I view this kind of, I'm looking at section five here where it says, you know, Ripon Study Components, and it lists out specifically, they will give us, you know, their estimate of units needed, number of units needed, administration roles that we would need to create, an organization chart, job descriptions, which will help with hiring. So I kind of look at this as like, okay, we've got a car, and the engine is making some timing chain noise, but if you've never taken an engine apart, you're going to buy the Haynes manual, right? And it's going to tell you exactly step by step what you need to do. And Haynes manuals are like $85, $90 now, right? That's not cheap to do. But at the end of the day, what does it give you? It gives you the color photos of exactly what specs you need, you know, what am I torquing this bolt to when I'm done putting it back together after I rip it apart? And that's what I think we're looking for from PAA, and that's what under this, you know, the work that they would deliver to us, that's what I see, is the step-by-step, exactly what the city needs to do, exactly what the EMS needs to do, exactly what the fire board needs to do to get it done, get it done right, so that we can let it go and enjoy, you know, our services and have them work at a high level for many years to come.
Is anybody from PAA here?
No, we didn't have anybody come for it, certainly.
That's fine. I just want to say that when they start the study, I'm assuming we're going to approve it, that they talk to our contractor, our administrative chief, and look and see the stuff that we're working through. I'm sure Mitch, you know what I'm talking about, getting those guidelines and stuff, because once we go back to the city, and I really think that's going to happen in one way or the other, the stuff that we're doing is going to carry forward to make this, the fire department, a better partner with the city and with EMS. So that's what I like to say, so thank you.
I just want to finally say, I don't know, I have a lot of questions on this yet. I do trust everybody on council that is on the fire board for their comments and everything, but in all reality, I just, tonight, I just don't have enough information to vote in favor of it, so that's where I sit.
Okay, cool.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Iverson?
Yes.
Reamer?
Yes.
Gallops?
Yes.
Denkert? Gottske?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Split?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I must take my leave and turn the meeting over to Ellen.
Boy. Save travel.
Never got to do that. You get to do it twice.
What? What?
I've never got to do it. That's not even fair.
You did that on purpose, didn't you?
Bye, Ted. I wasn't prepared. I'm hoping Ted has various say.
There is a gamble.
Oh, yeah.
You are retaining your voting rights as an older person, for the record?
Okey-dokey. Thank you. All right. Our next agenda item is the envisioned... Our next agenda item is the Envision Greater Fond du Lac, their annual presentation. Thank you for joining us.
Hello. Am I supposed to speak into that?
You can speak in.
Okay. It's movable. Thank you. I'll only take 45 more minutes of your time. In all seriousness, I'll go pretty quickly through the slides. I am always happy to talk to you afterwards or at another time if you want more information. I do want to make sure to touch on the reporting aspects of the MOU that you also graciously signed and agreed to for 2024. Now, there we go. A little history, we are the merger of the former Association of Commerce and Fond du Lac County Economic Development Corporation. So kind of interesting to hear the gentleman earlier here tonight, used to work at FCEDC, and we still continue as the joint chamber and economic development organization for all of Fond du Lac County. Our strategic plan, next slide, revolves around three pillars, economy, identity, and next generation, and that is also updated annually by our Board of Directors. Next slide. Here are some of our team members. We have 15 full-time team members along with one part-time ag ambassador who teaches ag in the classroom. Economic development, so retention, entrepreneurship, and attraction, all feed back to the scope of services A and B that are in the MOU. Retention is led by, next slide, sorry. Yep. Retention is led by Sarah Van Buren. She actually was our previous Director of Business Intelligence and is now our Business Outreach Specialist, and she heads up our BRE program, Business Retention and Expansion. We've done six in Ripon so far this year. The reason that we do BREs is this is how we ascertain problem points, what keeps business owners up at night, what do they need? We can identify some trends happening over time as well. And then the next slide, you'll see these are, although we have only done six, these are the BRE findings that are specific to Ripon. Kind of surprising is still labor, labor availability is still the leading inhibitor of growth, even though the county and Wisconsin as a whole is seeing a little bit of a slowdown right now. Labor is still number one. Also, interesting is two-thirds of the respondents state that it's the access to customers is their top reason. So they appreciate the location that Ripon gives them in order to get to their customers, which also leads to the 50% of businesses who say new markets are their new growth. So new markets might be geographical, they might be exporting, new markets also might be going into a different market segmentation that is new to them. Next slide. Entrepreneurship. We have Reyna Lyman in the audience tonight. Hopefully, a lot of you recognize Reyna. This speaks a lot to the scope of service A in terms of entrepreneurship and business support. Reyna has spent 118 hours so far this year in Ripon alone. She has met with five, five separate entrepreneurs through the Entrepreneurial Development Program in partnership with Craig and Ripon Main Street, along with she has met individually with 13 unique entrepreneurs in Ripon, giving them technical assistance. She also does hold regular business hours right here, thanks to the mayor allowing us to utilize his office. And she will continue to hold several events. One was a 90 by 90 event where we had some Ripon business owners attend, along with some And here's just a map of the 13 people that she has met with so far. And then the next slide is a really short video.
Do I have to play something?
Yes, please. You should just have to click it.
Oh, my goodness, you did that.
Is there sound? There we go.
... entrepreneurship workshop focused on building your next 90 days in just 90 minutes. Our 90 by 90 workshop helps outline the decisions and actions that need to be made to execute your business's 90-day goal. Our workshop offers entrepreneurs a platform to share their future goals, fostering an environment where peers can provide valuable feedback. We utilize a free accountability software to document decisions, actions, and goals, ensuring the participants receive timely reminders. This structured approach aims to track progress over the next 90 days based on just 90 minutes of focused effort. If you're a small business owner in Fond du Lac County, we'd love to see you there. Our 90 by 90 workshops are scheduled quarterly in Fond du Lac County communities. Check out our entrepreneurship event page to register for the next 90 by 90 nearest you. In the best...
Have we got another one?
Nope, that's it. Thank you. The next slide is attraction, and this is what speaks to the scope of services B, industrial development support. So part of what we do is market the industrial park that is here in Ripon. What is both a blessing and a curse is your industrial park is almost full, but there is still a little bit of room to grow yet. And that's where Lisa MacArthur, who is our Vice President of Economic Development, regularly meets with site selectors and developers, regional partners. We're the ones who submit when there is a request for information or an RFP, that we put forward your industrial park for projects. Here is just the link and the actual image of what that industrial park looks like in terms of when developers go to our website. Here, probably telling you everything you already know, we do subscribe to a software called Lightcast, and this gives us a lot of information, both on trends and economic impact. So for example, when the next business wants to come and move into the industrial park and they want to add 75 more jobs, and it's going to be light manufacturing, we have the ability to run a report that says, here's what the impact would be on the city, including things like your EMS or your fire service, and also what your tax base would grow. Next slide. We also work a lot with workforce programming. We consider workforce programming really K through 12 right now. These are some of the events that we host, and then we also work with, through our Agro Ambassador Program with elementary students, where we educate them on where their food comes from. Next slide. When we merged, there was an arm of the FCEDC that remained separate. So that is now called FCCR, and they are the revolving loan fund arm of our operation. They have their separate Board of Directors, they have a separate budget. This is where folks can access low-interest loans or capital, and this is meant to be gap financing. So for example, somebody has a million-dollar project, they go to the bank, traditional financing can get them to maybe $850,000, and they have a gap of $150,000. That is unique to Fond du Lac County. There are some other revolving loan funds in the state. Winnebago County actually just launched theirs. So this still is a unique aspect that we have when we're attracting businesses, including to your downtown, to your industrial park, what have you. We are the front end, so we handle all of the marketing, all of the intake, all of the financial business planning, financial spreads. So we're really making sure that it's easy for business owners or entrepreneurs, that we continue to be the one-stop shop of where to go when they need assistance. Then the other portion of our operation is our chamber. As I said, we're a chamber and an economic development organization. Here's just a few of our champion sponsors, along with some of the programming that we do. We were really proud to host a joint business connection with the Ripon Chamber of Commerce at Knuth Brewing and the Heidel House this year. We also sponsored Ripon Chamber of Commerce registration to attend the WMC Spring Conference along with us. Some of the, again, really unique aspects to Envision is our Agribusiness Council underneath our chamber. That's where things like Breakfast on the Farm go through, our Ag Ambassador Program, Day on the Farm, Ag Showcase, and that is something that continues to be incredibly important to our team and our Board of Directors, because agriculture is one of the main industries in Fond du Lac County. Here are some more of our team members. Joe Van Heisen is also in the audience with us today, and we did add another team member, Mike Rhodey, who is our membership coordinator. So hopefully, you will start to see him a lot more in Ripon. Another, there's just two more things I wanted to touch on. Fond du Lac Works, so this is FDLworks.com. This was a program of the Association of Commerce that carried through. We use this as our talent attraction and development resource for our employers. So it started as a job board, which when this was launched, was incredibly progressive at the time. Now with things like Indeed, and LinkedIn, and ZipRecruiter, the job board isn't as important. So what we did was rebrand it to be a place where if somebody is, say, being courted by Alliance Laundry, and they want them to move here, then this is a place that that candidate can go and learn, where do I want to live? So they can learn about what it's like to live in Ripon. What are the schools? What are the churches? What are the resources? What are the nonprofits? And this is a holistic way to show somebody what it's like to live in this community. And what we've learned is it's a great extra tool for employers to use. You know, Alliance Laundry is great at talking about themselves and, and what they can offer as an employer of choice. But what the, what was missing that we heard from employers is, help us sell the community so that they also choose to live where they choose to work. And then lastly, is our Advocacy Committee, and this speaks directly to the scope of services C in joint advocacy. It is an official committee of Envision, which was actually part of when Marty Farrell served on our Board of Directors. He worked with me a lot on building this committee, also our legislative agenda. And through this, we have also launched Public Office Preparation, POP 101. Another thing that we heard from employers and our municipalities is, there's not a lot of people anymore who want to do what you're doing, and much less be elected, but sometimes even serve on the committees. So serve on the Planning Commission, or serve on the Parking and Traffic. And this is our way of introducing folks of what it means to be a civil servant. It's not as scary as you think it is. It's not as daunting or time-consuming as you think it might be. So this is a way to help somebody craft what their campaign platform would be, what maybe opportunities are out there, how would you talk to the media when you have to do your first radio interview with probably Bob Nelson over here? So that's just one, one portion of our advocacy. There's some of our 2023 lobbying highlights. Those were some really big goals and issues that we lobbied for and advocated for, that we were really proud continued or maintained. So with that, I hope I flew through it fast enough, but left you with enough information. Again, we're, we are here to be a resource to all of you, including Adam and all of the businesses over here to assist. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Thank you.
I'll just, I'll just add, so we have an MOU. We go through the budget every year, so we'll come back with that MOU again for this year and have that to the council in the next month or so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okey-dokey. Moving on, Building Inspector Zoning Administrator Position. Adam?
In your packets, there is a staff report and a request. So you can see that since 2018, we have been contracting with Grand Valley Inspection Services for building inspection and zoning administrative services. That's Sue Leahy and her business. You had a copy of the contract, there's some kind of highlights of what that contract entails, and then there's also a summary of annual revenues versus payments to Grand Valley for those services. Some of the current issues, I believe, just from my office and our staff that we're seeing, is just the general hours and lack of zoning administration services and code enforcement. Those are falling more on my office, as well as, you can see, there's a code enforcement report where of, since, since having code enforcement, a lot of the code enforcement is falling to police, the Public Works Department. So there's been kind of a lack of code enforcement, particularly from a building code compliance perspective throughout the community. I think there are certainly, that's something that I've heard is a priority in town, to keep, keep up to date with that, or keep ahead of that, those issues. The hours of service are obviously, for the majority of the year, four hours a week in the office. And then there's limited meeting support, so at Plan Commission or Historic Preservation Commission, there are times where I feel that that, that position could contribute more or bring forward recommendations or changes that help either guide those committees and provide them support, and then also just what is an inefficient permitting process. We spend a lot of time, you know, going through paperwork and reviewing things. Things aren't streamlined. So ultimately, looking at this position, we reached and had a conversation, reached out to City of Wopon. They've had a similar conversation and are experiencing some of the same issues, and the concept of sharing an employee was brought forward to enhance the hours, to enhance this level of service, and to address some of the concerns that are listed. Ultimately, what we are looking for, what I'm looking for, is just permission to post the job, with the understanding that there's a draft job description, there is a draft shared employee agreement, as well as sort of a draft budget for the position. Ultimately, there is always a Plan B. We can't find a particular candidate, or we struggle to, within a certain timeline, we have alternative options. As I state, we are currently not working within a contract with Grand Valley that had elapsed last year, and nothing has been promoted, or been brought forward. So while this changes the scope in which we handle building inspecting and zoning administration, from the revenues we generate and the overall budget splitting an employee, generally speaking, we have revenues to support that position at a, at a part-time rate. And then that's, that's all I have. If you have any questions, I certainly can.
Doug?
Okay. So what we're generating in permit revenue for the City of Ripon, that's almost $100,000 a year, correct?
The past two years, we were $104,000, and this year, we will far exceed $100,000. We're $99,000.
Okay. So if we split an employee with the City of Wopon, assuming that goes okay with them, we then could get more revenue? Because if the job posted is around $80,000 a year, that's not just the cities, that's the overall of the two communities together, right?
Correct. I mean, generally speaking, if we look at a budget of about $140,000 for a department to pay for a full-time employee, and that we're split, it'd be 77, 70, right? The past two years, we would have exceeded that, and other years, we wouldn't have. What we are not talking about is missed revenue.
Because we did...
Because there are people doing work without permits all over the community, right? That is happening. That is happening. We are talking about fines for noncompliance and issues.
Not getting a permit to replace all the windows in your house.
That or, you know, having broken windows all in your house, right? So, I mean, if we want to begin taking code enforcement in particular, or zoning enforcement in particular, serious as a community, we are not going to get it done on the current contract. We are paying $50 an hour for those things. It's not getting done and it's falling to other staffs that aren't necessarily qualified to work in that space. We can write building permits. We have shown that we are doing that very well the last two years. But everything else that revolves around this position is, has not, is not currently being met, this survey.
Okay, John has a question and then we can come back.
Thank you. Question to Adam. Have you sat down with Grand Valley Inspections and said, these are concerns, this is what we're hearing, and tried to work it out?
We've had conversations, yes.
Okay. I have been in the construction business in Ripon since 1979, and I'm just going to say that the current inspector is the best I've ever seen. I could get 10 contractors in here tomorrow to vouch for that. There is just no doubt about it. I understand there's a lot of building construction going on without permits and there's a lot of violations of just junky property. And I think that's a whole different discussion because, just for example, I contacted DPW on one item. That person said, you need to talk to the inspector. Talked to the inspector. They say, you got to talk to DPW. There's a lot of mix-up, even at the top level of our city. So that's a concern.
That's absolutely a concern I have.
Yes.
And it's not being addressed under the current contract.
And that's where, you know, I feel maybe a good conversation with the department heads would take care of that. And I don't know the permitting process that is inefficient permitting process that you state. I think it's as simple as it's ever been in Ripon. I have a lot of things written down here. Have you approached Grand Valley to renew the contract?
Have we?
Yeah.
No, I talked to Sue about it probably two, three months ago after I recognized that the date was last year.
I'm going to be very blunt with this.
Mm-hmm.
If Grand Valley is not in Ripon, there's going to be a lot of pissed-off contractors, a lot. I'm sorry to say it that way, but I'm just giving a heads up to people. And as far as Doug's question on the amount, this year, we're having, Ripon is having a great building boom. We got Ripon College. We got the Boys and Girls Club, Alliance Energy, Four Homes in San Mar. So what happens if we're laying out 75, you know, $70,000 to $75,000 a year for an inspector and...
That's total.
Just, just...
Pardon?
Oh, yeah. And then we have a bad year again. And we only, then we're down to permits
of only maybe $50,000.
Are you finished?
Yeah.
Okay, Doug?
I'll let Doug.
Go ahead, Doug.
But it's, that salary is shared with two communities, correct?
That would be the concept.
Okay, so we will get potentially a lot more revenue under a new model of a shared employee that's 50-50 or so in each community. And it's in the community doing enforcement and permitting and making sure things are done correctly, being available to provide more, more time for permits. So if we're, if, so if we're chart, if we're paying together with Wapan, if, assuming they do this, 75, 80,000 together, I'm looking at expense this year to Grand Valley is $75,000 so far. Really, that's about 35 on our side. Am I correct? Also, how is health in WERS handled?
That would be a part of the budget.
So we would what?
Split it.
Split it or however?
Put it within the budget.
Okay.
So the fully burdened cost of the position is closer to 130, 140?
The full budget, if we had a department where we had to also pay, like, you know, for training or sort of, is about $140,000.
And it'd be split.
You're working up an $85,000 figure.
Right, right.
If we go with the employee model between the two communities.
I'm sorry, you're right.
Hundred and forty.
You're right.
Just wanted to get you apples in the apple.
It's not going to change much what we're paying out now, but we'll get potentially a lot better service.
You're going to get more hours.
More hours here in the community for code enforcement and checking on jobs and things like that. So, okay. Well, thank you for clarifying that, Lud.
John?
What are you thinking the hours are going to be? Are we going to have to split? So are you going to go 20 in Ripon, 20 in Wapan?
That'd be, generally speaking, at least 20 hours in each community each week.
Okay.
And right now, it looks like we're getting about five hours a week.
In the office, probably.
Mark, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a note that if the contract had already lapsed a year previous, then to me, that would indicate that Grand Valley maybe also didn't want to renew it. I don't know. You can't really speak specifically to the mindset or why that may be. But also, you know, there's two parties in a contract. So if it was agreeable to everyone, then it probably should have been brought up. And I just am curious, we may never know, but I'm just curious why it wouldn't have been brought up to be renewed from either party then.
Steve?
You've been talking to Wapan, I'm assuming, and you have something set up concrete yet or nothing?
Wapan, as far as I understand it, is experiencing similar issues and they have had conversations with their council and have been given the clearance to move forward with this idea of sharing an employee to address these similar concerns.
David?
So you're saying right now they're here five hours a week?
She's in the office five, she's in the office five hours a week.
And instead, we're going to 20.
And that would, I think that would include the code enforcement piece of it. That 20 hours would include office hours as well as the inspection of the builds?
Yeah, it'd be inspections, it'd be code enforcement, it'd be meeting support, all of those things.
Right.
John?
You have to remember the office hours and then there's also inspection hours where you have to leave the office to go on-site, inspect footings or whatever. So when you think five in the office, if that's what it is, but there's probably more than that out in the field.
Mark?
Just to that note, it looks like, ah, where did it go? Here under the report of who is doing inspections as well that are, you know, called in or needed, it just looks like the need is not being met. You know, the city clearly has a need for more time, right? And we're not getting it right now. And it sounds like there's been some discussion already on, can we, you know, maybe get more time? And if the results, you know, if we're not seeing the results and we're having the inspections fall to Adam, to Brett, to Lisa, to Captain Wallner, it seems like just getting 20 hours, you know, 15 extra hours, that's like, what, 200% more hours, we'd hopefully come out ahead in not only the revenue that we're getting from licenses and fees, but also just to get the job done, you know? If we have more hours that we're booking, you're saying, yes, there's office hours and there's field hours. I understand that. But according to this report here, we still have a need for more field hours. And maybe this is just the first step, getting a full-time position. Yes, we'll be splitting it. So it's kind of a part-time position, but getting that works towards getting the need fulfilled, which it seems like right now it's not.
Is there a motion to, I'm asking if, I'm sorry, would someone, let me rephrase that. Let me rephrase that. Would someone like to make a motion to institute or allow the administration to develop a Building Inspector Zoning Administrator Position?
I'll make a motion that we go forward with the Building Inspector Zoning Administration Position shared with the City of Wapan.
David seconded it? Dave seconded. Is there further discussion? Yes, John?
I'm just going to caution everybody that we do truly have a good inspector now. She's well-liked. She's smart. I'm not saying you might not even hire her. I don't know what the situation is. But you think you're not getting permits now with our inspector now? You wait?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think the issue is permits.
Well, Adam said we're not getting revenue.
It's not permits. The issue is not permits. So if there's no further discussion, do we want to just do a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Yes.
Reamer?
No.
Gallops?
Yes.
Dan Kurt?
Yes.
Dotzky?
Yes.
Torson?
Yes.
Split?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Moving on, we have an amendment to offer to purchase and development agreement with SC Swiderski Project.
So in your packet, there's an amendment to the offer to purchase with SC Swiderski. This moves the deadline to acquire the property to January 31st, 2025, and provides also an amendment technically to the development agreement for the TID or TID overlay district that's required in the June 13th, 2023 development agreement. Main reason is they are working through engineering and are getting their final plans ready. And our general deadline was, I believe, August 10th. So they won't be able to meet that deadline to acquire the property. So they're asking for the extension so they can continue to get to civil design.
So this was more of a third-party delay just resulting in a push of a deadline?
Yeah, I think there's multiple things in the background, including just the market for financing and other projects that they've had to kind of pivot from. So this one just sort of, I would say it's still, like, they're still doing it. It's just they sort of had to, with interest rates and things, they had to be more calculated and that delayed it for a couple of months. So now they're getting final engineering done.
Is there a...
Are you looking for a motion?
Yep, looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the amendment to offer to purchase and development agreement with SC Swiderski, the project over in, on the road here.
Is there a second?
San Marville.
San Mar, sorry.
Yep. I will second.
Thank you, Dave. Is there any further discussion? Yes, sir.
Lud, do you have any problems with the amendment or anything? No, and when it was brought to my attention by Adam, I looked at the agreement and that's where we added in the idea that we still have our part of it, which was tied to that date of successful funding of a TID or a TID overlay. So we still got our homework as well extended, together with their due diligence. So it protects both parties. Do they still have a way out if they wanted to? Sure, they just don't do anything between now and... Yeah, I know. But I just, okay, because I know, I just know that interest is high and, you know. Yeah, they do a wiggle room out, which we granted them in the initial agreement. The due diligence period was a walk away. So they still have the walk away. They're just agreeing to extend the walk away until the end of January. And we've got zero into it, zero money into it, correct? Essentially.
No money. And we've been preparing to create a TIF district as required. We could have done that by the deadline of August. It does allow us more time to plan that out and close other districts if need be. So it's not something that city administration is worried about or is, you know, we're, we have more work we need to do too. We could have done it, but we just, their planning kind of delayed it. So, okay.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, can we do a voice vote on this one?
Sure.
Okey-dokey. Everyone in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
No.
Is that you, Jonathan? That was Jonathan saying no. Moving on, public cruising requests. In your packet, you have Craig Tebon requesting for scooping the loop. Craig, did you want to say anything?
Basically, we're doing the same thing that we've done the last three years, I believe. No, actually, I think this is going to be our sixth year. So we've shortened it up a little bit following the first year. So, what, 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Saturday, the 3rd of August. And the agreement when we created the, or recreated the scooping activity was that we'd come back and make the, a formal request. So, and that's what I'm here to do.
Any questions for Craig?
No.
Okey-dokey. Thank you. Is there a mo...
One question.
Go ahead.
You're doing it again, so I'm assuming turnout has been good. Have we seen increased turnout year over year? Has it stayed pretty steady? I know there's some years in between there that were a little iffy, but...
Yeah, it's been, I think it's been well-received. We did have rain maybe the second or third year that put a damper on things. But otherwise, it's been a decent event. You know, it's sometimes a little challenging maybe for the police department, but they, they've been very good to work with us.
Is there a motion to approve the public cruising event for Saturday, August 3rd?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Thank you, Doug. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Mark, you seconded it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Our final business of the day is a pay application for the industrial park water tower rehabilitation project. Adam?
It's final pay application for $27,642. Recommended for approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Jonathan has made a motion to approve the pay application. Is there a second? David seconded it?
Do we need to put the amount in?
$27,642. Are you agreeable to a friendly amendment? Thank you, Mr. Attorney Iverson. And David, you're okay with that? Okey-dokey. There we go. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Our next item is project updates and staff reports. Chief Wallner, do you have anything? Mitch, you already spoke, so we don't need to hear from you again.
Um...
Okay, Adam?
So just a couple of things. The Plan Commission did meet and create a Public Arts Advisory Council. So we'll post on that and individuals can sign up or show interest of being a part of that. So that was approved. DPW facility is out to bid. Bids are due August 1st. We are working through the financial management plan with Ellers and have a meeting upcoming there. And then just an update on a specific project, Oshkosh Street, the railroad crossings and some of the repairs there. We're trying to coordinate it all together. Waco finally gave us a date of late September that they're going to complete that project. So that's been delayed more than a few months, but they finally have ordered the materials and will complete that project. So that's on Waco. I wanted to let everybody know that we're working through with them.
All right. Seeing as the mayor is here, there are no mayor communications or appointments. And then agenda items for future council meetings. Does anyone have anything they want to have added? Yes, sir.
I would just like to bring up for discussion, I think we're still holding the farmer's market every Saturday morning down in the green.
That's up to him. He did that.
It's not, it's no more? Okay. So that's what I was, I was going to ask or that's what I was going to have discussed was, is there a desire for that to be again? Or is there some other event? We had a citizen make a comment about a lot of our events in the city, our public events are... are driven by, you know, certain interests and maybe there's some draw there for other things. But if there's no one there to organize it, then we can't do it, so.
You talked yourself out of that one.
Yeah, I think I talked myself out of that one.
All right. Yes, sir.
Last time we had a meeting, I asked that the Park and Rec Commission or somebody review parking by Murray Park for the baseball diamonds.
No. Yeah, that's.
Because there's a lot of people that have been talking to me about that, especially, especially if they have tournaments and stuff like that for the kids, the parking is not so hot. And if they could expand on that somehow, at least put gravel in a certain area or something like that, it would help alleviate the problem. And if we could put that in the, or have the Park and Rec review it and then get it done, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you. Anything else for the good of the order? All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And Steve seconded it? Or David?
Dave.
Okay, there you go. We're adjourned. Thank you all. Oh, I have to say the. I think it's, yeah, 9:09.
9:09.
How does this get turned up then?